Dr. Walter.
I believe he's out.
I was waiting for Dr. Walter. I know he's out. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Chicago County Board of Education to order Thursday, November 13th, 2014. It's 7:12 PM. Want to say to the public, we regret a little bit of a delay, but we were waiting to make sure the directors that were available would be in attendance, and we also had a bit of a technical difficulty with our online. Having said that, I'm going to ask Mr. Karpinski, will you go in and say that we have a pledge of allegiance. The flag is over there. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Diggler, roll call, please.
Mrs. Samplum?
Yes.
Mrs. Garman?
Yes.
Mr. Garman?
Yes.
Mr. Karpinski?
Yes.
Mr. Michael?
Mr. Steph?
Here.
Dr. Walbert? Mrs. Weez? Dr. Hartman?
Present.
Ms. Homo? Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Carrasco?
Thank you. Next in line is the secretary's report. We do have the minutes that were posted for the work session on October 2nd, 2014, the work session on October 23rd, 2014, the regular board meeting of October 9th, 2013. An executive session was held on October 2nd and 9th, 2014 for personnel matters. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted and previously reviewed as posted and at the prior work session?
Homica motion.
A motion by Mr. Karpinski to approve all three sets of minutes?
Yes.
Second? Second, Mr. Garman, thank you. Any discussion or question on any of the minutes as posted and previously reviewed? Hearing none, we'll ask for a roll call on that, please, Mrs. Diggler.
Mr. Garman?
Yes.
Mr. Karpinski?
Yes.
Mr. Steph?
Yes.
Mrs. Weez?
Yes.
Mrs. Samplum?
Yes.
Mrs. Garman?
Yes.
Dr. Hartman?
Yes. The next items we have posted are the financial reports, the budget transfers, and of course the bills. We also had these posted last week during our work session and of course, available for review under Board Docs for the school directors. Any questions or comments at this point in time from Mr. Sinopoli or Mr. Kelly relative to any of the financial reports that have been posted?
The construction and the capital reserve or the quarterly reports, every three months we ask for your approval on those. We have the one budget transfer request as well as the bill lists for four items to the construction fund and the regular general fund and food service bill.
Okay. Any questions by any directors concerned with either financial reports, the posted budget transfer, or any of the bills as posted?
The check number 42176, which comes under the legal.
Okay.
Made up to...
I'm sorry, can I have that number again?
If it changed to eleven?
Eleven?
That would be with regard to negotiation correct. Do we have a total of the date what that may be at this point?
We would have it, I don't have it with me. I could get it, yes.
I'd kind of like to see a fog in the wind.
We can do that. Okay. Anything else, any other questions?
Yeah, under HM category, check number 42231.
Yes, that's our workers' compensation. Is that the workers'? No. Yes, we pay eight or nine installments. Got you. Any other questions at this point in time? Before we move and act on these particular items, it would take us back to agenda item number three, which I didn't miss since I don't have an electronic post, the adoption of our agenda incorporating the additions and deletions as posted for us. We have a motion to adopt our agenda. Motion isn't released. But a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Garman. Any discussion on any of the items that we'll deal with on our agenda at this point in time as far as the merit of having one? Hearing none, we'll ask for a roll call to adopt the agenda as posted publicly.
Mr. Karpinski?
Yes.
Mr. Steph?
Yes.
Mrs. Weez?
Yes.
Mrs. Samplum? That's... Mrs. Garman?
Yes.
Mr. Garman?
Yes.
Dr. Hartman?
Yes. Back to the financial reports and the bills and so on. If there are no additional questions or comments relative to posting any of the financial reports or the budget transfer bills, we should entertain a motion to approve those. Motion by Mr. Steph to approve all. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Garman. We have a motion to approve the various financial reports, approve the transfer as posted and the various bills. Any additional questions at this point in time? If not, we ask for a roll call, Mrs. Diggler.
Mr. Steph?
Yes.
Mrs. Weez?
Yes.
Mrs. Samplum?
Yes.
Mrs. Garman?
Yes.
Mr. Garman?
Yes.
Mr. Karpinski?
Yes.
Dr. Hartman?
Yes. Okay. We are... For public comment, I have one written request for public comment from Deb Betts. Deb?
I have the same questions I had last week, but a few more. But just in case, I know you said you had a hard time remembering this situation last time I came in. So I want to show you the pictures again of the nine staples in my son.
Mrs. Betts.
So I'm going to go ahead and look at that.
I do want to correct, I did say I had a hard time remembering. And I do want to point out that this is a period for public comment.
Right.
There's a lot of question and answer session. If you have public comment on any of the items we have posted tonight, we'll be more than happy to listen to your public comment on items that we have posted.
I want to know then, I'm sorry, when do I get a chance to ask questions?
We do not have question and answer session at the regular voting meeting and generally not at the work session.
Okay, when is the next meeting for that then, so I can be prepared to come to that?
If you have specific questions relative to an issue, we will ask you to contact the superintendent and arrange an appointment with him, and from there, we would proceed.
Okay.
So if you have public comment, you may. If not, I would excuse you at this point in time.
Okay, so last week we were allowed to ask questions, so why am I not allowed to ask questions this week?
This is our regular voting meeting tonight, and we are here to conduct the business as prepared for this evening. And generally, we try to stay with public comment.
Well, generally, but this isn't kind of like a general thing, nine staples in a child's head.
I'm going to repeat it.
From a teacher, from a grade teacher.
Tonight, we are doing purely...
That's nine staples on a child's head, he could have been killed. And no ambulance, no policeman called. I wasn't called as a parent.
I'm also going to gather you and mention that I told you we were not dealing with the issue from the past.
Oh, no, 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 this isn't the past. This is the present. This is a parent asking questions of why my child was left standing there with no help from an adult at that time, from a teacher.
I'm going to ask you to please have a seat.
Okay, well, I would like to have some questions answered. So, Mr. Kelly, you're going to give me your word that you're going to answer these questions I have when we set up a meeting, correct?
I'll do the best that I can.
No, I need to know, are you going to answer these questions? It'll be yes or no, that's all I need to know.
I'll do the best that I can. Thank you. I do not have any other requests for public comment at this time? Thank you. Student board members, Ms. Murphy?
I'll as much as say except yesterday's 3:13. Yesterday was athletic career night at B High School, and Mr. Jackson told me it was very successful, about 70 people and students attended, and nine schools attended, and Penn State was one of them, and he told me that they gave a lot of good information along with the other schools to all the students and parents who are interested in their students maybe having some sort of a career in athletics. Otherwise, everything else is sort of great?
Well, thank you, Ms. Murphy. And Ms. Murphy and I had a brief dialogue last week, she was on a visit to a university.
Yes, I was delivered to university last week, so that's why I was in the...
And I just told her we didn't miss her, but we were glad to see that she was exploring possibilities for her future. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
We're ready to move to new business. We are going to change the order of the items listed. We're going to move to the financial section next. We're going to do that because we do have some business to conduct there, and we have two gentlemen that have traveled a distance to get here, and we would like to take care of this first. All I have to do is find the financial items, so you go right ahead and just...
I have to share. Go talk, Paul. I'm trying to remember the... Bamber, correct?
Well, good evening, my name is Chris Bamber, I'm here from Public Financial Management. We're the district's independent financial advisor. We're here tonight to consider the incurrence of general obligation debt to fund the middle school project. Today, we had a competitive sale for approximately $9.95 million of the district's general obligation bonds. Everyone should have a handout in front of them that kind of looks like this. I'll go over it briefly, it contains all the results and the final numbers today, as well as an update on the overall financing that's related to the middle school project. The first page is just simply an interest rate chart. Generally speaking, interest rates continue to remain low as both the domestic and international economies continue to struggle. So I wonder if any time you're competing in any sort of capital projects or refinancing is a good time, when interest rates are low. So that's certainly a good thing. Pages two through, what is this, five are the district's credit rating report from Standard &amp; Force. In connection with this bond issue, the district did receive a credit rating of an A+ with a stable outlook. That's definitely a very strong rating, I encourage you to read that report, it has a lot of good details on the financial health of the school district, including financial, strong financial operations, as well as adequate wealth and income levels. So once again, it's a very detailed report, I won't go through it here, but I encourage you to read through it. I'll turn then to page six, which is a summary of the competitive sale that happened today. Once again, around 11 o'clock, we held a competitive internet auction, kind of similar to an eBay style auction. Our underwriters, not only across Pennsylvania, but across the nation, were invited to bid on the district's bonds. We received eight total bids from three different underwriters, with the winning bid coming from Robert W. Barrett &amp; Company. They're an underwriting firm, I believe, based out of the Midwest. They won the auction with a true interest cost of 3.205%, as you see up here in column two on the top. Once again, true interest cost is the all-in metric that we use to determine what is the most cost-efficient bid for the school district, and that doesn't, that includes not only the interest rates that the underwriter proposes, but also the commission that is paid to the underwriter. So that combines into one all-in metric known as the true interest cost. Moving down here, the winning underwriter did select AGM Insurance in connection with this bond issue, which will raise the rating to a double A, which is a rating of the bond insurance company. Down at the bottom of there, these bonds were sold with a new optional redemption date of May 15th, 2020. So that's at which time, if market conditions warrant, the district would be able to entertain a refinancing of these new bond issues. Page seven is just simply what we call the chronology of the bids that were received, is kind of the detail that went into the summary on the first page. And probably the next few pages are the most important part. Page eight is what we call kind of the worst-case scenario. This is the overall financing summary without any reimbursement from the state through the plan con process. If you recall, the district's project is eligible for plan con reimbursement, but there's no certainty about when it's going to be received. So what we've done here is prepared financing summaries, both based on the fact, without reimbursement, which is kind of a worst-case scenario, as well as a little bit later on, assuming there was reimbursement received. The bottom line here is that you can see the section or the columns in red, the yellow columns, is the Series A of 2014 bonds which were sold today, and the bottom line is that they came in significantly under budget. I believe Jamie was here, Jamie Doyle was here on October 2nd, I want to say, with some estimates about the financing. And basically, overall, this financing picture has improved with today's results by just over $1.5 million over the life of the bond issue. So once again, this is significant improvement due to the very good results that were received today with today's auction. And if you move all the way over to the right, the millage equivalent, which once again takes into account the worst-case scenario without reimbursement, that's estimated now for a total of 3.42 mils. I believe when Jamie was here in the beginning of October, that was around 4.08 mils, so that's an improvement of about .66 mils from when we were here last time. So once again, significantly under budget with today's sale, which is obviously a very good thing in the district's financing plan. The column in green represents what we call the cleanup issue, where the remaining portion that still needs to be funded, which we estimate will happen sometime next year. Once again, when that comes around, when the district does need the money, we can go out to the capital markets once again and do the same thing we did today with the exact amount that you would need. The next few pages are simply the backup numbers, the actual raw numbers that went into the summaries I just mentioned. The page nine is the actual financing schedule. Point your attention to column seven, which is the gross annual debt service that I mentioned before. Once again, gross debt service is just principal plus interest. Column eight is what I had mentioned about the state aid, the plan con reimbursement, for which the page I just showed, we are not assuming none, but assuming that the school district does eventually receive its plan con reimbursement, which is approximately 17.26 cents on the dollar, that amount there is shown in column eight. When you deduct that from the gross interest, you get what we call local effort, which is shown in column nine. Moving on, page 10 is the summary of the sources and uses. I'll point your attention to the middle, there is a few dates and one number. The date-to-date, assuming that the bonds are approved tonight, is December 18th, which at which point then the proceeds would be available to the school district and deposited into the construction fund. And then the number there that's in the box, it says the yield of the issue, that's the overall rate on the bonds, and oftentimes the question is, well, what rate did I borrow this money at? And the answer is right there in bold, 3.0689% was the average rate for the district's bond issues there. The next page is kind of what we refer, was the same as the worst-case scenario, but this actually assumes the reimbursement from the state through the plan con process, so it looks very similar. The numbers are just a little bit different, obviously, because it is assuming that reimbursement. And once again, generally speaking, this is a significant improvement to when Jamie was here in the beginning of October. Roughly speaking, it's about $1.3 million better, and when you translate that into a millage equivalent, that's about .55 mils. The next page, page 12, is just an update to the district's outstanding debt summary after this issuance, so this includes all of the district's outstanding bond issues, including the one that we just issued. The top portion is the debt service, which is principal plus interest. The bottom portion is local effort, which is after reimbursement from the state. I will point your attention to down towards the bottom, where you see a call date. The district does have two upcoming refinancing opportunities in the middle and end of next year, so will likely be before the board sometime in the spring to begin those discussions, considering market conditions and such. Once again, to take advantage of low interest rates and achieve a refunding hopefully for net debt service statements for the district. So I know I just said a lot, but I'm certainly here to answer any questions or anything related to the financial aspect of the block issue.
Page 11, the 2.62 millage, that would be assuming that you get the reimbursement that you signed back.
That assumes that's the...
That would be our impact to tax pay.
Correct, assuming the reimbursement from the state is received. There's no reason to assume it's not, it's just that maybe a delay to the process, yeah.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rob Moore, who's here from Benham, who's a Woodside, who's the district bond counsel, he'll be going over the resolution.
I have passed out the usual resolution with the big caption that we're going to read word for word. I think I ought to explain how we got to $9,955,000. Earlier in the year, we had a refunding issue. What we want to do is not go above $10 million of debt to keep the bonds bank qualified, and that allows banks to buy at a favorable interest rate. There is a deduction from that, from bonds issued for the refunding we did earlier in the year. The principal amount of debt that you called in is not counted toward the $10 million issue. So we had $45,000 of chargeable against $10 million from the refunding. Add that $9,955,000, we come right to the $10 million. So these are bank-qualified. The resolution approves the issuance of general obligation bonds for the middle school project, $9,955,000. It awards the bonds to Robert W. Baird, who made the best competitive bid. On page six of the resolution, you will see, and you can compare this to Chris's page nine, these are the interest rates, principal amounts, and maturity dates of the bonds. There were, on Chris's schedules, there were two blocks, we call these term bonds. The bonds due in '25 and in '28 were bid as a group. You will be retiring principal every year, but the way the bonds show up on page six, we have blocked the amounts due in '26 and '28. But principal will be retired in accordance with this schedule from the district's sinking fund. The resolution appoints M&amp;T Bank as the paying agent, and AGM as the bond insurer, which gives you better rate. I think it's interesting to look at Chris's schedule on his page nine, look at column four. Column three are the coupon amounts on the bonds, but the yield to the investor is in column four. column four. And you see how low those yields are, if you're an investor in the early years, the purchaser, Robert Baird, is paying the district a premium for most of these bonds, so it lowers the yield from the coupon amount. So if you're an investor, you have a coupon of 3%, but you're paying a premium for your bond, then you get a lower yield. So that's, the yield column's very important, that shows you how low these interest rates are in actuality, and all that premium and discount is figured into the low bid. The resolution takes all the action required to issue the bonds to obtain the state approvals, and by accepting the bid, you're locking in the bid of, by accepting the resolution, you're locking in the bid of Robert Baird tonight, and if the market changes tomorrow, it doesn't matter, this is the interest rate on the bond issue.
Any other questions?
I'm trying to summarize forty pages, because I know you don't want me to read every page. It's a great time, yeah, it's a great time to finance, really, I mean, you see those yields in the early years, less than 1% if you're borrowing the money.
Thank you.
Well, would that, I'd like to recommend in the form of a motion that we approve the resolution regarding the sale of the general obligation bond series of 2014 as presented by Mr. Moore.
We have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Karpinski. Any questions by any of the directors? I'm sure everybody has any concerns answered here tonight, since we have the correct people to answer them. Any comments? And we do work at keeping accurate minutes here, gentlemen, and I'm sure Mrs. Ziegler will note the comments she's made about the level of interest rates, and not only the actual numbers, but the fact that we're in a really good situation here, and that's, I think, reassuring for us as representatives of the public, and hopefully, our public will share our gratitude for that good financial situation, and we did have our groundbreakings, so everything's falling into place, and that should work well for us. Go ahead.
Do we have any idea how long we can expect the debt to recur in?
No. There's still backlog. They're estimating about three or four years, so the rest of them are...
Did everyone jump on when we did?
A lot of other people did, but there was also a backlog that were approved and never funded, so they're first at work. We are starting to see that backlog from the ones that were approved before the more reporting, a couple of those are flowing out now.
Right, but there probably was a window of...